Right?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, good afternoon, August 30th, 2021. To help and welcome to the CDBG Advisory Committee Meeting. Uh, to help slow the transmission of COVID-19 and protect the health and safety of the community, city council as well as board and commission meetings will continue to be closed to the public for in-person attendance. The public is encouraged to watch and participate from the safety of their homes to practice social distancing. Meetings will be broadcast live on Glendale TV, viewable on Spectrum Cable, Channel 6, AT&amp;T U-verse, and Channel 99. Um, and I believe you guys have given me, sorry, the, uh, I need to read a statement. Apologies, because I switched computers, so I don't have it in front of me. Okay. So, welcome to the August 30th, uh, CDBG Advisory Committee Special Meeting. Uh, the public is encouraged to watch and participate from the safety of their homes to practice social distancing. Uh, meetings are broadcast live on Glendale TV, viewable on Spectrum Cable, Channel 6 and AT&amp;T U-verse, Channel 99. Meetings are also streamed live in high definition on the city's webpage, glendaleca.gov/live or on youtube.com/myglendale and on Apple TV, Roku, and Amazon Fire devices using a free app called Screenweave and choosing Glendale TV from the menu. For public comments and questions during the meeting, call 818-937-8100. I'll repeat that number again, 818-937-8100. Public comments on a specific agenda item will be taken when that agenda item is discussed. With that said, may we have a roll call, please?
Certainly, committee members of Adesian. Committee member of Adesian? They have lost his audio, come back. Gazarian?
Here.
Iniones Gabrielian?
Here.
Vice Chair Goribian?
Present.
Chair Armenian?
Present.
Uh, committee member of Adesian, if you can hear us, uh, please try calling in. And I'll move on with the report of recording secretary regarding posting of agenda. The agenda for the August 30th, 2021 Special Meeting of the CDBG Advisory Committee was posted on or before August 27, 2021, on the bulletin board outside City Hall. Item two minutes at A is approval of the minutes of the June 21st, 2021 CDBG Advisory Committee Special Meeting.
Any comments or suggested changes to the June 21st minutes?
I move to approve.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second?
Okay.
I'll take roll call. Committee members of Adesian? Still not with us? Gazarian?
Yes.
Iniones Gabrielian?
Yes.
Vice Chair Goribian?
Yes.
Chair Armenian?
Yes.
Item three, oral communications. We don't have any callers at this time.
Okay.
Item four, reports information only at A is status of active year-to-date CDBG capital improvement projects.
Uh, thank you, Iris. Chair Armenian, members of the committee, um, staff has prepared a PowerPoint presentation with a stop summary on the status of current CDBG capital improvement projects. Um, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Tomat Kabanjin, um, for that update on the CIP. Tomat?
I had hearing, Tomar.
Hey. Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay.
We can see the screen.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Chair Armenian, uh, committee members and city staff. I'm here, uh, to present to you community capital improvement project status. Uh, we have city CIP projects as well as community agency CIP projects. For city CIP projects, Palanconi Park Playground, Shade Structure Project, Pacific Park Our Official Turf Multipurpose Field Project, Pacific Park Playground and Pool Shade Structure Improvement Project, and Pacific Park Splash Pad Project. For our community agency CIP projects, we have Catholic Charities, Glennel Community Center Roofing Improvement Projects, Home Edman Honor at Main Campus Roofing Project, Home Edman Honor at Main Campus HVAC Project, Home Edman Honor at Main Campus Bleachers Project, Army Cultural Foundation Solar Panel Project, Home Edman Honor at Main Campus Gym Divider Project, which has been completed. Okay, Palanconi Park Playground and Shade Structure System, scope of work, replace aging playground equipment with up-to-date code compliant play equipment. Total available budget is $494,966. Uh, it also includes shade canopies covering much of the playground areas. CSP staff is currently working with a playground equipment vendor to refine designs and cost estimates for both play, uh, playgrounds. Status update, project is expected to be completed in January 2020, 2022. For Pacific Park Our Official Turf Multipurpose Field Project, scope of work, convert the existing neat natural turf baseball field to multipurpose official turf field for multipurpose use, including baseball and soccer. So, we have for you an existing condition on the left, an aerial view, and on the right is a rendering of the multi, um, our official turf proposed. Total available budget is $1,848,000, includes CDEG as well as development impact fees. Um, what, in addition with the scope, there's also an addition of new fencing and gates, uh, increased field availability by 92 days, uh, per year. Status update, the project is currently in plan check with 90% construction drawings completed. Project is expected to be completed in December 2022. Next, we have Pacific Park Playground and Pool Shade Structure Project, scope of work, installation of two shade structures. Total available budget is $313,293, includes CDBG as well as city general fund. Uh, scope, uh, is installation of permanent shade structures at two playground areas, installation of two shade structures, Pacific Community Pool Deck Area. Status update, project is currently in plan check with 85% construction drawings completed. Project is expected to be completed in July 2022. Next, we have, uh, Pacific Park Splash Pad Project, scope of work, replacement of existing water splash pad with new splash pad. Total available budget is $734,000, includes CDBG as well as city general fund. Scope, uh, is current splash pad is 14 years old and needs to be replaced due to new health code requirements, as well as it, it is damaged and has some, uh, tears. Uh, replacement of current splash pad, water feature with new splash pad, addition amenities, increase size of splash pad area by 20%, updated surfacing, water filtered, and recirculated per public health requirements. Status update is the project is currently in design phase, and the new design with LA County and City of Glendale approval should be completed by September 2021. The project is expected to complete it, uh, by July 2022. Uh, the remaining of the presentation is our community CIP projects. First one, we have Catholic Charities of Los Angeles. We have Phase One and Phase Two. For Phase One, we have center improvement project, for Phase Two will be center roofing project. For Phase One, we have a, uh, we have a grand total of $256,800. Scope for Phase One includes renovation and repair work for the interior and exterior of the existing building. Scope, uh, for Phase Two, uh, grant is $123,988. Um, scope for Phase Two, project renovation will update struct, the structure for ADA compliance, improve security and complete a set of deferred maintenance, replacing 100 existing floor steam lighting with energy efficiency LED lighting. Demolition and removal of existing roof, installation of new roof, metal flashing for vents and AC units. Status update, for Phase One of project completed, environmental review, planning is waiting drawings for Phase Two Roofing Project, which was funded in physically your 2020 to 2021. The project for Phase One and Phase Two is expected to be completed in summer 2022. Next is Home Edman Honor Chapter Roofing Project Main Campus, scope of work, replacement of three main areas of the roof at main campus. Total CDBG funding is $193,270. Scope includes, uh, removal, re-insulation of CDBG font solar PV, clean and prep existing roof for polyurethane spray foam roofing, replacement of three main areas of the roof at main campus. Status update, planning department is waiting, agency's drawings for the project to include an environmental review, contract agreement with the City of Glendale is forthcoming. Facility was closed since March 16, 2020 due to COVID-19 pandemic, but now the facility is open and in operation. The project is expected to be completed, uh, by spring 2022. Next, we have Home Edman Honor Chapter HVAC Project Main Campus. Scope of work is to replace seven existing damaged HVAC units. Total CDBG funding is $95,113. Uh, the current units are 20, uh, are over 20 years old, and it is in a damaged condition. Uh, the system is to replace all seven HVAC units. Status update, agency is currently working with architects on project specifications. The project is in environmental phase with planning department awaiting drawings from the agency to proceed with contract execution. The project is expected to be completed by spring 2022. Next, we have Home Edman Honor Chapter Bleachers Project Main Campus. Scope of work, replacing existing bleachers with custom motorized retractable bleachers. Total CDBG funding is $60,638. Um, the scope is to remove current bleachers, install custom motorized retractable bleachers. Uh, status update, agency is currently working with architect on project specifications. The project completed the environmental review phase, contract agreements with the City of Glendale are in the process of being executed. The project is expected to be completed by spring 2022. Next, we have Armenian Cultural Foundation Solar Panel Installation Project. Uh, the scope of work is installation of five pole saw panels in the existing parking lot. Total CDBG funding is $219,537. Um, agency sole sourced the project due to two attempted good faith efforts to find a qualified contractor and a highly specialized nature of the project. This was the cause of the delay on the time frame of the work. Once a contractor was chosen, the, uh, project was processed and is now in completion. Project construction and installation is completed. Agency waiting on city, uh, Glendale Water and Power for final inspection and approval to energize the system. Uh, agency will work with LA County to obtain a notice of completion once the system is energized. Here we have a before and after image. As you can see, the after image, the solar panels are installed. Uh, part of our project management, um, for a CIP project is to do site visits every so often, so we can document the process of the work. Um, as you can see, we have selected some of the days on the main work. On day nine, there was framing and electrical work done. On day 15, completing paving. Day 21, framing of solar panels. Uh, day 32, which is the project completion. Next, we have Home Edman Honor Chapter Gym Divider Project Main Campus. Total CDBG funding is $26,287. Scope, uh, includes installation of one motorized athletic gym divider curtain with electronic connections for the motorized divider. The installation of the gym divider will allow accommodating additional practices for youth. Status update, this project was completed on June 3, 2021. Notice of completion from LA County was obtained. Project is now complete. Uh, once again, we visited the site. This is our before and after image before day one. Uh, the contractor added protection to the existing floor before any work is to be done. The gym is one of the primary facilities used for basketball, volleyball, and indoor soccer. On day four, project completed. Uh, here's the picture of the new motorized athletic gym divider curtain with electronic connections installed. Uh, please let me know if you have any questions.
Questions from anybody?
I have a question. That's a general, I believe.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, has any of the agencies, uh, has requested, uh, extension to their contract, especially due to COVID or anything?
Tomar, did you want me to answer that?
Yes, Maggie, please.
Not a problem. Um, Chair Armenian, members of the advisory committee, committee member of Adesian, that's a really good question. Many of the projects, when they're in environmental phase, um, is basically we're awaiting the drawings, um, or I should say, planning department is awaiting drawings, and that takes time, um, from the agency, for the agency to prepare. So, that being said, they don't technically request the extension, they have to get their specifications and their designs ready for our environmental. Once the environmental is completed and the contract is executed, that's really when the real work starts and it kind of gets the ball rolling. So, after that point, it's usually a five to six month period for the project to end, depending on the scope of the work. If it's a very, um, highly detailed project, it would take few months. But for, like, for instance, the gym divider took just one week to complete once everything was in place. So, that being said, I hope that answers your question.
Follow-up? Are we decent?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Other questions? Sir Goribian?
On the, um, on the Excel sheet, I received the shows on their Glendale Youth Center year-to-date, 854,871, for 21, 22 funding, is that correct number?
That's the total of everything that's ever gone into that center.
Chair, Chair Armenian Members of the Advisory Committee, that is the total for twenty-one, twenty-two, and that includes the Glendale Youth Center, the restroom project that was just currently approved, Alma House, and our YMCA project that's forthcoming in this fiscal year. There wasn't much to report on that, so we wanted to show you that status as the amount that was funded. But at this point, in our next report, you'll actually see some sort of breakdown of those projects. And you'll get a more detailed report on each project as they are being executed.
Glendale Youth Center, out of that amount, was a hundred and sixteen thousand.
That is correct.
Okay, because it's on the same line items, which is confusing a little bit.
Yeah.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
I have a question.
I'm sorry to interrupt, Chair Armenian. I just wanted to let you know that your audio isn't coming in very clearly.
I'll speak up. Can you hear me better now?
Just slightly.
Yes.
Okay. I'll speak louder. Ms. Quinones got the alien.
Thank you. I wanted to ask the question the way that Mr. Avadecian asked for it regarding extensions, but this time asking a couple of our largest capital improvement projects that are now receiving approvals for planning, environmental impact, et cetera. And between the time we approved it and budgeted the project to after, to the present time, some of the materials out there, because of shortages, et cetera, have had really sharp increases in cost. Do we have any fallback, any reserve funding? What do we do in the case that the projects go up considerably because of the material?
Excellent question. Chair Armenian Members of the Advisory Committee Committee Member Quinones Gobrelian. That is why we ask each agency to have some sort of leverage along with the budget that they present to us. After the environmental review is completed, that is really when the contract is actually executed. And at that time is when the agency puts together their plan. Their budget is put together, and that is really when everything is getting started. And that is really when they're doing the legwork of working with a contractor, taking a look at the costs related to the project. And again, and you will see this in our upcoming report, sometimes the project is actually returned due to budgeting constraints that they would have. So in this climate that we're in right now, that is definitely a possibility. Many agencies really try to be very conservative with what they ask. And again, it's difficult for them, but we try to help them out as much as we can. Now, with funding, we always ask for maybe Phase One and a Phase Two, as you see with Catholic charities, to come back the following year and kind of add on to their current project. So that could be an option for them to come back in a following CDBG funding year and ask for more funding to complete a project that's very important to them.
But in general, the HUD has not has not made any contingency planning or offered anything out there. Or can we proactively be on the lookout and request for additional monies? And I know you can't request it until we see the need, but perhaps if there is a forum out there, let it be known somehow and start communicating.
CDBG funding is a formula-based funding allocation that we receive each year. And that being said, it's based upon three factors. Our poverty rate, our population, and the age of our housing stock. Of course, we also have to take into consideration the congressional budget and how our federal government decides on how to fund CDBG. So there are a lot of factors involved in that. So when we look at census numbers, we really want, we wanted people to participate in the census for that reason, for the reason that you're asking, because that brings in more money to the city and to our agencies. With this census, I can tell you, at this point, our poverty level has gone down one percent. Our population is doing well. It's at a hundred and ninety-six thousand. But again, we're still awaiting our federal government to give us the final numbers. We're hopeful for a little bit more money this year. And possibly, they are in talks in the Build Back Better Plan that the new administration has, that there could be funding for CDBG, which would mean more money for our city. So I will definitely have a report for the committee once that information comes into us. And that could possibly bring more money for our CIP projects, especially for our community agencies.
Thank you.
But I think to Ms. Quinones Gobrelian's point, at least in terms of what we can control, perhaps in future funding cycles, we can consider advising organizations to build in that sort of contingency, if you will, on inflation of material costs. Because I think that that situation is probably with us for a while. And it's more acute today. I mean, we typically have inflation, obviously, as a matter of normal course, but I think it's more acute these days. So as long as that situation persists, perhaps we can just advise future proposals to consider that factor as well. Because otherwise, it ends up really, it ends up being borne on the shoulders of the organization to come up with the difference. If a difference comes into play between the time they propose to the time they execute. Any other questions? I have one question. I don't know if it's appropriate here, but I'm just trying to refresh my memory. Did we ever allocate anything to the Fremont Park project or proposal? Or is that? Sure, or not at all? Can't, I just can't remember. I know we've discussed the project, but...
Chair Armenian Members of the Advisory Committee, at our June meeting, the committee decided that it was okay for staff to move forward with the submission of a Section 108 loan repayment of four million dollars to Fremont Park renovation project. We are going to have a community meeting in September, and then we're going to present that report to the council for final approval to submit that Section 108 loan repayment application to HUD. So we will definitely have a report for the committee, letting you know if we were approved for funding, and that funding would be four million.
Okay, and that is what will, is that the driving factor in terms of timing?
I think our director could possibly answer that question.
Yes, Chair Armenian Members of the Committee, yes. We're planning on opening, reopening bids within the next five to six months. We are working with a vendor to provide a LCA, a life cycle assessment on artificial turf. Once when that report is finalized, we will take the report to the Parks Commission, Sustainability Commission, and the council, and we'll hopefully move forward with the project.
You said, I think Maggie said, is the next step a community meeting around it to get community input?
That is.
Do we have a date on that yet?
Yes, we do. Chair Armenian, it is going to be on September twenty-ninth, and it's going to be by way of three platforms, a virtual meeting due to the COVID pandemic. Regularly or normally, it would be obviously in person. We are also accepting email comments, and we're also accepting telephone call-in comments.
What time is it on the twenty-ninth?
It'll be on at seven PM, and it'll be in our report in about, in our action items. We'll present that to the committee and to the public.
Okay. The only reason I was asking is because there was some online back and forth on social media from the public that was asking about this. And Councilmember Kusakian was involved in that online conversation. I just happened to see it, and so I jumped in saying, I'll find out some more information and post it back out to those who are interested in participating, who seem to be residents of the area. Okay, thank you for that information. Any other questions regarding this report? If not, we'll move on to the next agenda item.
Next is item four B, summary of performance for fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, CDBG Public Social Services Programs.
Chair Armenian Members of the Committee, I'd like to introduce Community Services Specialist Eric Adamian, who has prepared a PowerPoint presentation to update the committee on the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, excuse me, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one CDBG Public Social Services Programs. Eric?
See the presentation now. Eric, if you're speaking, we don't hear you.
Eric, we see the screen, but you're on mute.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that. Thank you, Ms. Gavarian. I hope everyone could hear me now.
Yes.
Wonderful. Thank you. Chair Armenian, CDBG Advisory Committee, and city staff, I will be presenting the fiscal year twenty twenty, year-end Public Social Services Performance Report and Expenditure Rates. Okay. Armenian Cultural Foundation After-School Youth Enrichment Program. The proposed number to be served was sixty, and the actual number served was eighty-four. The agency was awarded seventy-four thousand, six hundred twenty-one dollars, and they expended nearly ninety-four percent. Forty-nine participants have shown improvement in self-confidence and self-awareness as measured by a pre- and post-test evaluation. Also, forty-nine participants have shown academic gains in at least one core subject area. The agency was awarded additional funding to provide childcare services through a remote learning program to twenty youth families impacted by COVID-nineteen. Thirty-five participants in a remote learning program have had a safe, clean, and quiet learning environment to meet their academic, social, and psychological needs over the course of the twelve-week program. The Catholic Charities Homeless Prevention Loaves and Fishes Program. The proposed number to be served was ninety, and the actual number served was one hundred eight households. The agency was awarded sixty-eight thousand, four hundred eighty-one dollars and expended eighty-five percent. One hundred eight households maintained an active link to auxiliary health, mental health, employment, and legal services. One hundred eight households received aid in the form of goods from the food pantry, rental assistance, utility assistance, of referral to additional COVID-nineteen-related services within three months of entering the program. Catholic charities did receive additional funding, and they expended their current services to clients impacted by COVID-nineteen. They increased the unduplicated number of households to be served from sixty to ninety. Glendale Youth Alliance Youth Employment Program. The proposed number to be served was forty, and the actual number served was forty as well. The agency was awarded thirty-seven thousand, and they managed to spend down the entire grant. Forty youth earned income by working a minimum of one hundred hours in a part-time job. Also, forty youth were assessed for health needs, counseling, and supportive services. Family Promise of the Verdigos Housing Support Program. Proposed number to be served was thirty, and the actual number served was forty. The agency was awarded eleven thousand, and they expended the entire amount. Forty households were enrolled into crisis housing within thirty days of connecting to the agency. And twenty-one households served or transitioned into housing within twelve months. Door of Hope After-School Program. The proposed number to be served was seventeen, and the actual number served was twenty-six. The agency was awarded twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred eighty dollars, and they managed to spend down the entire grant. Twenty, forty-two participants demonstrated growth as measured by meeting positive behavioral outcomes within six months. And seven participants in a therapy program demonstrated an increase in social, emotional development, and coping skills. Door of Hope was awarded additional funding, which allowed their program to provide food services, upgrade their internet, and broadband services for remote learning. As a result, twenty-nine households had reliable access to internet services for their remote learning and access to food services assistance. Boy Scouts of America, Verdigo Health Council, Youth Development Through Scouting. Boy Scouts of America, the proposed number to be served was one hundred, and the actual number served was sixty. The agency was awarded twenty-two thousand, and they expanded nearly eighty-three percent of the grant. Fifty-three youth received scholarships that included registration, uniform, supplies, and handbook. Twenty-eight leaders and one-unit commissioners have received training for the program as well. The agency did receive additional funding to assist fifty additional youth with core outdoor programs, including virtual and drive-up programming and campground activities. One youth participant in one or more of the adapted camping programs are served. Armenia Relief Society Community Outreach Project. The proposed number to be served was two hundred seventy-five, and the actual number served was two hundred seventy-nine. The agency was awarded one hundred five thousand, and the agency managed to spend down the entire amount. Ninety senior citizens were enrolled in ESL classes and completed the twenty-week curriculum. Eighty-eight clients received job search assistance, employment referrals, and secured permanent, full or part-time employment above minimum wage. The agency did receive additional funding for their COVID-nineteen recovery program, and they provided food pantry services. One hundred one clients received food assistance within one business day. Committee for Armenian Students in Public Schools Intervention Prevention and Plankville Group Counseling Program. The proposed number to be served was sixty-three, and the total number served was fifty. The agency was awarded forty-eight thousand and managed to spend down the full amount. Forty-two students showed reduced incidence of aggressive behavior, and forty-three students showed improvement in following direction and academic responsibility. Salvation Army, the Zone Program. The proposed number to be served was fifty, and actual number served was forty-five. Funds awarded was twenty-five thousand, six hundred forty-three, and they spent nearly all of it. Nineteen students were regular attendees of the Zone Program, and twenty-one students improved reading comprehension and vocabulary recognition. The agency did receive additional funding, and they provided social, emotional learning, health, wellness, and therapeutic art classes. Twenty-nine students engaged in critical skills curriculum and received a certificate of course completion. Armenian Cultural Association Hamaskain, intergenerational experiences. The proposed number to be served was eighty, and the actual number served was sixty-three. The agency was awarded thirty-three thousand, and they managed to spend the full amount. Fifty-six students attended at least twenty classes throughout the curriculum. Fifty-three students graduated the program year-ending, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. The agency did receive additional funding, which increased the total number served to eighty unduplicated participants and offered additional activities such as dance, theater, and tutoring pods. Thirty students have participated in dance, theater, and tutoring, and technology tutoring pods. Children's Burn Foundation, L.A. Troop Fire and Burn Prevention. Children's Burn Foundation, L.A. Troop Fire and Burn Prevention. The proposed number to be served was one hundred, and the actual number served was forty-six. The agency was awarded fifteen thousand and spent nearly all of it. Seventy elementary school-aged children enhanced their level of learning or awareness towards fire prevention and lifesaving skills by way of a pre- and post-test. Seventy participants have successfully drawn an evacuation plan for their homes. Salvation Army People's Choice Market Food Pantry, the proposed number to be served was one thousand, and the actual number served was two thousand, six hundred eighty-six. The agency was awarded forty thousand, and they managed to spend the full amount. Two thousand, six hundred fifty-six participants were from extremely low-income and moderate-income households, and one thousand, seventy-seven participants were elderly, sixty-five or older. The agency was funded through the additional funds with the purpose of providing social service operations in the form of food pantry services. The individuals served must be residents from the Greater Glendale region and of extremely low- and moderate-income households. Housing Rights Center Fair Housing Program, proposed number to be served was five hundred, and the actual number served was three hundred twenty-six. The agency was awarded twenty thousand and spent the full amount. The agency provided two virtual workshops for tenants and landlords, and four Glendale residents were assisted in filing for housing complaints. Chair Armenian and committee members, this concludes the Year-end Public Social Services Performance Report and Expenditure Rates presentation. Thank you all for your time and attention. If anyone has any questions, I would be happy to open the floor for discussion. Thank you.
Questions, but before I go, allow other committee members to perform. Any questions?
I have just a quick, quickie question on the numbers, because I didn't, I didn't see, well, two questions. One on the numbers, for example, I can't remember who it was. One of the organizations said that they served, they were supposed to serve a certain number of people, and I think they only served thirty-six, but down in the explanation, it said seventy people were, you know, able to do this, and seventy more people were able to do this. So I'm not sure how, how the numbers are crunched together and, and how they come to the final number. There, there is, do you remember one organization that said they served, they were supposed to serve, I think sixty, and they only served thirty-six, but down in the numbers, there were seventy people that were served? Are these numbers that we verify? Are they self-submitted by the organizations? And then, at the end of the day, what happens to the unspent money? Those, those are my questions. Thank you.
Okay. Committee member, Kiñanas Gabrielian, thank you for the question. So for the first part, basically what happens is the agency is responsible to submit applicant information forms, and we are collecting our data from the applicant information forms that they submit to us. Basically, what happens is any participant that is taking part in the program needs to fill out the paperwork, and every quarter, the agency will go ahead and submit, submit these to us, and as CDBG staff will go ahead and review them and make sure that everything is, is in line with HUD guidelines. What happened with that one agency, I think you're referring to Children's Burn Foundation, because the agency was not directly working with the students, there was a lot of, there was a lot of difficulty collecting the AIF forms from the participants. So we were able to retract forty-six AIF forms, and throughout the program year, the agency did say that at least seventy were able to participate. The reason is because COVID-19 had its issues with the, with the agency, and they were a first-year agency as well. So they were kind of going back and forth with trying to figure out how they will be able to connect with the parents, and there were some issues with GUSD in regards to kind of collecting the information that we needed in order to make the presentation as accurate as possible. And I think in regards to the funds, Maggie, if you want to answer that, if, or I could, I could jump in and go ahead.
Thank you. Chair Armenian members of the Advisory Committee, committee member Kiñanas Gabrielian. Anytime that funding isn't spent in social services, program administration, or capital improvement, that funding goes into an unencumbered pot of money, and that money is set aside for capital improvement, future capital improvement projects only. So it becomes unencumbered. So all this funding that you see that was unspent goes back into our line of credit for the city of Glendale, and it will be reissued, and you'll see that this year in our funding allocation plan, that we'll have additional funds from these projects that have been completed that, you know, even if they leave behind seven dollars, that funding goes back into the line of credit. So we don't use it or lose it. It's, we actually put it aside and actually use it on future years, future fiscal years.
So it'll end up back in the CIP budget?
But CIP only.
Thank you both. Thank you.
Other questions before I jump into mine?
I don't have much of a question. It's just a statement I was gonna make as Mr. Adamian was reading the report. I was looking, reading, listening to the agencies of what they've done, how many people they served, and so on and so forth. Just want to thank from, starting from our federal government to allocating the funds all the way down to our local governments that be able to help individuals of such, and the numbers, as you see, which even though we're a microscopic drop in the water compared to the size of the country that they're helping, I just want to thank our entire country for being able to do this for our community and for people. So I'm blessed living in this country. I just want to thank, put that out there. Thank you.
Eric, could you go back to the last Housing Rights Center slide for a second?
Sure, let me get the PowerPoint up.
Quick question on that one, and then I had a broader question that affects all of the other ones.
Armenian, you're still coming in very low. If there's any way you could speak up a little bit more, that'd be great.
Sure. Did you hear my request, Eric?
Yes, sir. I will go ahead and share my screen right now.
I think it was the last slide.
Yes.
So if I'm reading this right, from an outcome perspective, they assisted four residents, correct?
Four residents who had Glendale.
Filings.
Who, I'm sorry, it was four residents who filed fair housing complaints.
So that's at a cost of twenty thousand dollars, right, for those four cases, plus the workshops, obviously?
Um.
I guess where I'm going with the question is, it just seems like a lot for, I mean, I recognize that these are cumbersome processes, probably, but just seems like it's, because it says proposed to be served five hundred, actual served three twenty-six. And I assume the three twenty-six is primarily the number of participants in two virtual workshops, because otherwise, it's the four that actually filed complaints. Am I reading this right?
Chair, Chair Armenian, so it's three hundred twenty-six are Glendale residents that were served by the Housing Rights Center, of which only four Glendale residents had actual complaints that they filed with Housing Rights Center. So it's.
Eric, if I may, the Housing Rights Center has quite a few lawyers on, in their organization who file fair housing complaints. They do get up to, and I should say, the city of Glendale has up to five hundred calls that come in and inquiries that come in that the Housing Rights Center assists them with, fair housing. And, and what they do is they assess those calls and those possible complaints. And they have to assess to see if it actually is a true fair housing complaint, and that's when it moves through the process, and the lawyer will get involved from the Housing Rights Center to file a fair housing complaint. So of the four that you see that were assisted, there could be more. We just have to stop it at, obviously, June thirtieth. So at this, for this year, this fiscal year, three hundred and twenty-six phone calls or contacts were made with the Housing Rights Center from Glendale residents. But four of them actually went to legal proceedings, had legal proceedings. I hope that kind of clarifies this particular PowerPoint slide.
Yeah, I guess, and once I, once I say what I'm about to say on this, it'll lead into my next question, which is broader, which is, I guess it comes down to defining what do we mean by when, you know, individuals are served? So when, when they say three hundred and twenty-six people are served, I think there's an important part of the story that's missing in the outcomes part of this, which is the number of people, it's really about how many people they screen and calls they take and things like that. Whereas if you just look at the outcomes, it looks like.
Yes.
How-to workshops, and they filed for four people. Do you see where I'm going?
Yes.
There's obviously more to the story here, so they should, they should include that in the, in the future. I think that part's missing with the Housing Rights Center specifically.
All right. Thank you.
Second question, which is a broader question, is, is a matter of, it seems to me, it feels like there's different metrics being used when we say, again, to the point of, what does it mean in terms of how many people there's, an organization is serving? Everyone seems to use the number of people just as a hard number coming through programs, which is great. It's certainly a metric. But when you look at Salvation Door, Casps, ACF, and Burn Foundation, there were more subjective measurements that they had introduced. You know, for example, saw a positive improvement in a child's behavior, or, you know, things of, you know, language like that. Which leads me to question, you know, well, how are you measuring that, right? Like, how are you measuring that sort of soft thing, right? Someone's attendance at something is a pretty hard metric, whereas saying we saw a positive improvement in psychological or this or that is a much softer kind of metric. So I want to know from those organizations that are, well, number one, I think it's important that we use, to the degree possible, similar metrics, because it would be unfair for some to just present number of participants as their metric of an outcome against program dollars, whereas others show a kind of a deeper, let's say, more metrics beyond just pure participation. I think, I think I appreciate those organizations that did do that, particularly if it applied to them. But I'd also want to know a little bit more about, like, how that metric is being, you know, how are they doing that measurement? Because it's a very tricky thing that they're measuring. And we, we as the committee would just be taking it at face value, because I don't know, our staff, I don't, I don't know, like, how you can dive deeper into that other than just taking their word for it. And, and I'm trying to get away from just, I would want us to get away from just taking our word for it. I think our, our job as oversight is to dive a little bit deeper to make sure that the dollars being spent are actually resulting in the outcomes that we desire as a, as a committee.
Maggie, can I add something? So to answer your question about how do they, how does the agency measure the outcomes? For example, we have ACF After-School Program, the way that they actually monitor and have a percentage to the improvement of children's participants to the advanced level that they see improvement in, is the way that, so what happens is the beginning of the year, they give out quizzes or a presentation, or writing, any, any sort of tests to kind of evaluate the student before they get into the program. And then what they have is a mid-course where they give out the same quizzes, the same questions, again, to see what the improvement percentage is from beginning to the mid-level. And then the third one is at the very end, before they submit the fourth quarterly, to kind of get, like, the graphics of the improvement. That's the way that ACF does it.
And so is that something that the staff looks into, or you're just taking in the data that they're presenting?
No, they actually do submit the quizzes that they show to us for each student, and they give us a graph for each student to see what level that each exam was given and how they improved their skills.
And then to add to that, Chair Armenian members of the Advisory Committee, there are pre- and post-tests that are given. For instance, Door of Hope and Casps would be good examples of the pre-test and the post-test. Now, because of privacy and because they are socio-emotional type tests, we're not privy to those results, but we are privy to the pre-test and the post-test format. So that is actually turned in with the contract, and we are, we do receive that. We just are not able to, to take the information that is written by the psychologist or the therapist due to privacy and HIPAA reasons.
Thank you for that explanation. Mr. Gavarian?
Terimia, since, I just want to first understand, so wanted to know the measure of how do we know if, but my question is, if you want to go further deep, because it raises, if we raise that question, the next question is, okay, so you evaluated whether it's academic or psycho, whatever the level is. If there was improvement, we'll fund you, but if the child or the person failed, and you don't get funding? I mean, we measure only on the positive, or, I mean, the work is done. Isn't that what we're supposed to measure, that the work is done versus the outcome of it?
No, you're, you're misinterpreting my question.
So, yeah, I wasn't clear, because if work is done, but the outcome could be either way, how do we measure or fund based on, maybe I misunderstood you?
No, you're, you're connecting two things that I'm not connecting. I'm merely saying, our job is to oversee and make sure that what is the work that is being done is constructive and, and outcome-based, not to the sense of, not to the way you put it, which is, the purpose is not to be punitive about it. The purpose is merely to understand whether or not the, any program is being successful. Because oftentimes, these programs will come, the same program will come in as a proposal year after year, and so it would be good to have an understanding of, are those programs effective? Are they achieving the outcomes that they proposed to achieve when they, when they initially propose it? So it's, it's based on, I mean, there is some performance here. Just like if, if, if there weren't, if we saw this drastic difference between number of proposed clients and the number actually served are dramatically different, meaning one's higher, one's lower, we would be questioning, right, whether, what's, what's happening here? I'm, I'm merely pointing out that some organizations are going a step further. They're not just saying we served fifty people. They're saying, serve fifty people, and here's additional outcomes that we achieved, good or bad, doesn't matter. And so that's important information when it comes to assessing whether or not programs are being successful. Now, we don't have the time to dive into every single detail and test score and things like that, but just to see trending is important to us. And, and as I mentioned, some of the topics, like the last one with Door of Hope, where they have to do with, let's say, behavioral improvements and things like that, that's a little bit, A, from a HIPAA perspective, B, from a, you know, we're not experts in that field, so we, to some degree, are taking their word for it through whatever testing mechanisms they're using to show that outcome, if you will. So I just wanted to understand that a little bit better in terms of how these metrics are being applied by the organizations, and then how we are doing our assessment of them, other than presenting what they're giving to us. I hope that clarifies.
Yeah, yeah. So I assume, Mag, uh, staff, we, we have been doing that. It's not like that's what has been happening up to now, right? That's pretty much what we're following. Not that we're missing or haven't been doing good, it's just, it's a just validating what Chair Armenian is saying that we have been doing.
Chair Armenian, members of the Commission um Committee, I think Chair Armenian does raise a good point and, and program outcomes are actually um looked at by HUD as well. So you do raise a good point in that in our annual evaluation and every year when the committee as a whole determines which programs to fund, um, that is one thing to keep in mind, because if we are funding a program that is continuously not meeting their goals, then we need to reconsider um whether there are other agencies or programs that may be able to do the same work and meet the goals. So I'm not saying, I mean, COVID is um COVID has caused a lot of um challenges and hardships for the agencies, and so I'm not saying that this year should be the year for us to use that matrix to evaluate for next year, but it is important for us to look at it from year to year to make sure that these agencies are, one, serving the number of people they said they'll, they'll be serving, and two, meeting their goals. Staff has um consistently worked with agencies that are funded from one year to the next to evaluate those goals and make sure that if we aren't meeting those goals, what are the challenges? Um, are you realistic in setting your goals? Because some of the agencies, especially if it's a first-year program, they might be setting unrealistic expectations of how many people they'll be able to serve in meeting their outcomes and their goals. And so we evaluate those at, for next year's funding, should the agency be funded, and adjust those accordingly. But there are some agencies that have been funded from year to year and have had a challenge in meeting those goals. And for whatever reason, you know, it might be a challenge in being able to gather the income information, which is one of the agencies that LA Troop, that Eric mentioned. Um, because we aren't able to, especially this last year, the agency wasn't able to have um one-on-one contact with the families. We weren't able to gather the AIF forms, which provides the income information. And so even though they served more students, they weren't able to per- to gather the forms, which means we can't count them as as um low-income families served. Um, should this have been a regular school year, then we would evaluate, maybe there aren't enough low-income students within that school that need that type of program or service. Should we be changing the school location? It doesn't mean the program isn't a good program. It just might need to go to a different area, which could better serve the population that the funding is intended for. So these are things that, from year to year, we as a committee do need to evaluate, and as part of our interview process, do need to look at prior year um numbers served and outcomes achieved, because you need to evaluate whether that funding could be better spent somewhere else, serving the population that it's intended to serve. So um unfortunately, you know, it, it's not to say that just the low-income, for example, families need um education on, on uh that the LA Troop group is providing. But because the funding is intended to serve majority of the low-income population, we have to make sure that at least a certain percentage, which is the sixty percent that we have identified, are students that are from a low-income family. It would be great for these programs to be in all the schools, but unfortunately, you can't be using CDBG funding. So um just to kind of elaborate on that and say that we do look at that, but we do also ask you as a committee to look at those numbers and question the agencies, you know, during your annual um review, because we do bring back this, the final report um when we're considering funding for the next year. So um, these are information that we include in the staff analysis and want you to consider for future funding, and then, of course, ask the questions, because we as staff do ask them. Um, but we want you to be satisfied with those answers as well, and if you feel the funding could be used um differently, um then, you know, we're happy to take direction from the committee.
Thank you for that explanation. Any other questions on this agenda item?
Uh, I, I'm not, I do. Just a clarification, because I, I may have misunderstood your question, Mr. Chair, and I because I didn't really hear the, the answer. I um and maybe I'm the one who's, who's not thinking about it. So let me ask you this. The way I understood your question was, uh, and it, it goes back to the first question I asked, do, do they self-submit and do we do any validating? And I'm sorry if I missed your answer. Do, do we validate these numbers? Do we validate the programs? Do we, you know, uh, go out there and uh somehow, not just the intake forms, not just getting the intake forms from them and tabulating, but is there another way through site visits and participation and uh field visits, you know, audit? I, I don't know, how, how else? I'm just trying to see if we validate those figures.
Committee member, Kinyanis Gabriellian, Chair Armenian members of the Committee. We do have an annual monitoring, so staff does go out to each of the sites and we do review of samples set of forms and evaluate the program in that manner. Just like Ms. Kavarian said, we won't necessarily see the case notes for a program that is um, you know, based on uh case management. So we won't necessarily see the individuals' names and the improvements, the notes from the case, the case manager. But we will be able to evaluate how the program was run. We evaluate that the forms, what the forms were, like the pre-test and the post-test that um are being um gathered, and um we do get to evaluate the process A to Z by asking for forms and documentations and AIF forms. So staff, each of the staff do go out to the sites once a year for the annual monitoring. Now, when they submit the forms to staff, which is quarterly, which is what these reports are based off of, we, we, we have no choice but to go off of just the forms that are being submitted. But basically, based on those forms that are submitted, we take a sampling when we go out to the site for the annual monitoring, and we verify that the information submitted matches the forms that were submitted, if that makes sense. So yes, we do validate it to an extent. If there are HIPAA violations by asking to see certain documentations, those we won't be looking at. Um, but I could defer to Maggie for a little bit more details if you'd like. Um, or, you know, we could bring back a report, like a sample of what we would be looking at, if that's something the committee wishes to do. Normally, on, in a regular year, you would all have a site visit. You'd be able to go out to the site and um look at the programs and ask questions and see it for yourself as well. But due to COVID, we haven't done that the last two years, and I'm not sure if we'll get to do it this year. Um, and the ma- monitoring has been done virtually, if I'm not mistaken, at least last year, but Maggie, please jump in.
Um, absolutely. Thank you for clarifying all of that. Um, yes, that is true. Um, we do two types of monitorings. The staff first does a desktop monitoring and gathers the year's um quarterly reports, because the monitoring is done in May, right before the end of the fiscal year. So when the staff reviews the entire year, um, entire year's uh quarterly reports, they want to make sure that if anything really truly stands out, it's time to discuss it and to see what they can fix in the next two months before the year is up. So when they actually do their onsite visits, they actually did do onsite visits this year. And they purposely did onsite visits with certain agencies that they felt needed the extra guidance. Um, and so what they would do is focus on what was deficient, if there were deficiencies. And that's basically how we've been doing it this year. Prior year, it was strictly desktop, because we were not allowed to be onsite. But in years past, yes, every single person, every single agency gets a, a, a visit, an onsite visit. Um, and it's actually a two-hour monitoring. It's also program and financial. So we take a look at their invoices along with their program submissions um related to the AIF forms, related to their contract terms, everything that they need, their policies and procedures manual. Um, I can go on and on with um the list. I, we do actually have a list, a check-off list uh that the staff uses to do the monitoring. It's a HUD guidance-type uh check-off list. It's very comprehensive. Um, and I hope that answers um your question.
Yes, and I, I want to just explain, you know, Mr. Chair, Onig, Maggie, and the entire staff, I'm asking it as a matter of, you know, educating myself and understanding the figures, not out of a lack of trust at all, but just, you know, to, to continually uh understand the process and, and maybe also hopefully continuous improvement as well. But thank you. Thank you very much.
Yeah, and, and I mean, there's nothing wrong. I mean, we are an oversight body. There's nothing wrong with asking these questions. I mean, yes, we obviously have great trust with the organizations that we fund. Uh, but at the same time, we have to ensure that our processes are um, or uh kind of do the appropriate audit and oversight. So, um, like, like, on its most basic level, everyone is submitting lists of people that they've served, right? Um, I imagine staff is, as part of your sampling, also validating that those are real people and you know, that they exist and they are, they are, in fact, participating in the program. You can't do every single one of them, but just as a matter of normal auditing processes, I imagine that's, that's, that's the most basic kind of check and balance that you do, and then you go further by looking into programs and visiting and things like that. Is that a good assumption?
That's a great assumption, and I'd like to also add, because I really want to give a kudos to the staff. They look at each and every applicant information form, not only for the name, the address, and um family members. They also look at the financials. So what they're looking at is the documents that have to be submitted to prove that um at least ten percent of these, um, the agency's uh proposed numbers are low-to-moderate income individuals. So they're really looking very analytically, very deep um, um into what the level of uh income is for our clientele. So we have four levels. The clientele have to fall into three of those four levels to be eligible and for us to meet our high, uh, our HUD requirements and regulations.
Great. Well, thank you very much. Thank you for the staff and all the efforts you put into this, uh, you know, in the background. We don't normally see all that. We only see um the type of presentation that we saw, which is, you know, ju- really just uh touches the, the surface in terms of everything that you guys are doing to ensure good, good work is getting done. Uh, any last questions on this? Otherwise, we'll move on to the next agenda item. Okay, next agenda item, please.
Item five, action items at A, reprogramming of sixty-five thousand dollars returned from fiscal year two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen. CDBG Community Capital Improvement Project, Adventist Health Glendale Windows Project. At one is a motion providing direction to staff on reprogramming of sixty-five thousand dollars returned from fiscal year two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, CDBG Community Capital Improvement Project, Adventist Health Glendale Windows Project.
Thank you, Iris. Good afternoon, Chair Armenian members of the CDBG Advisory Committee. We also, I have a short PowerPoint presentation for you today regarding options on reprogramming returned Adventist Health Glendale fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. Um, funding for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. Um, to give you a bit of background on Adventist Health Windows Capital Improvement Project, um, in fiscal year two thousand and eighteen, Adventist Health was awarded sixty-five thousand dollars to replace six of their original windows at the Livwell Senior Center building. This included removal, demolition, and installation of interior and exterior frames. By May of two thousand twenty-one, the project had already gone through environmental review. The agency had already prepared its project specifications. A bidders conference was held in spring and a bidding.
Could you please mute yourself? Go ahead, Maggie.
Okay. Um, in a bidding, uh, the bidding phase was completed. A general contractor was also selected at this point. In June of uh two thousand twenty-one, on June fifteenth, um Adventist Health had informed staff that uh they were returning their funding, and this was due to budgetary concerns and constraints that they were having. So therefore, we're here today to give the committee some options to reprogram the return funds. Um, we have three options for the committee. The first is to award a portion or the entirety of the sixty-five thousand to a currently funded uh CIP pro- project, which is the YMCA of Glendale First Floor All-Inclusive Locker Room Project from twenty-one, twenty-two. Uh, a second option is to set aside the return funds and add it towards the twenty-two, twenty-three program planning year. And then we can RFP that out to community organizations um this coming November, December. Or number three, a combination of one and two can also work. So let's go over a little bit of option one. Option one would award a portion or the whole sixty-five thousand to the YMCA. Now, the YMCA was the only agency that was um funded for CIP that was not fully funded in twenty-one, twenty-two. They had originally requested five hundred and sixty-six thousand. They're currently funded at three hundred and thirty-four thousand four ninety-five. So basically, they'll need another two hundred and thirty-one, two hundred and thirty-two thousand to get them to their original asking. Option two would be to set aside the return funds this fiscal year and then add it towards twenty-two, twenty-three program planning year and then RFP it out um in next fiscal year to community organizations for CIP projects. And then again, option three would be a combination of one and two. You could always um as a committee, decide to give the YMCA some money and then set aside the remainder um for twenty-one, twen- I'm sorry, twenty-two, twenty-three program planning year and then RFP it out to community agencies. As a reminder, um basically, we would be going to the City Council and Housing Authority in November to do this. Um, staff does not really have a recommendation. Um, it is open to the committee to decide how they um want to program these funds. Any option is a viable option. And this um concludes my presentation.
If I may ask one clarifying question before we open it up for broader questions, which is on option two, where you talk about RFP, um, are you talk and adding it to the uh next year's cycle, right? Is it going to be lumped in with the total amount uh where we're taking in RFPs for next year, or is it, is it two separate RFPs? In other words, one for the sixty-five and one for the next program year of funding?
Chair Armenian members of the Advisory Committee, it would be lumped together.
Okay, and there's no, there's no difference between the money to be, to come for next year versus this is old, much older money? Is this not aging and are there no, not risks of not allocating it sooner?
Um, the risks are going to be the same in the sense, the timeliness factor that you speak of, Committee uh Chair Armenian, risks, the timeliness issue is going to be there, because this is from a two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen project. Um, we're already late in the game on this one. Um, that being said, even if we were to um issue it to an agency today, we'd still have to go to council in November um with any option that we choose, because in November, um, we have to present the funding allocation plan to them, and part of that funding allocation plan would be your decision today um whether to go with option one, two, or three. So either way, it's going to be um allocated in twenty-two, twenty-three. Um, and if it's a YMCA that gets the funding, we are still working on their environmental and their contracts, and they're still looking for leverage for their remaining their um deficit that they have of about two hundred thousand, and I think that's something that they had mentioned in our last meeting, that they were looking for donations for that funding. Um, so that being said, we're, timely, this is always going to be a factor. We prefer um agencies to spend down their funding, but we've realized, or we've come to realize CIP projects do take a very long time to complete, and there's really no other way around it.
But nonetheless, the YMCA program is already in the works versus if you lump it, uh then wait for proposals, you're going to allocate it in February, and so it, it is a lengthier.
You're going to have about an eight-month um period.
Other questions?
Yes.
I mean, uh, uh, can you understand?
Do we earn any interest on this money while we're waiting to allocate this, or? Or it's, it's almost a year from now. I, I mean, I don't know how many funds there are in there. Or I know this is government, but is it a possibility? I don't know what happens. And the other thing to me is if we today decide that we want to give it all to the YMCA's project and they don't have access to it for another three months, but they need it. I'm, maybe it's not the YMCA project, but just as an ongoing process, isn't there another medium for the city council to act quicker on these instead of waiting three months?
Good question. Unfortunately, we have a timeline with the projects. And we also have a timeline with our city council. Because we are going to come back in October with the committee to present to you the funding allocation plan for the upcoming year. That will be part of that. The $65,000 has to be recorded as part of that. So if you do go with the YMCA, it will still be recorded. And we still have to move forward with the execution of the contract. And it'll still take a few months to do. Yes, it will be a shorter period of time, but we still have to go to council in November and get that done.
So regarding the interest, and I was, I was, I was actually very, I'm very serious about this. I'm sure the city, I mean, are there lumped, these available funds? You know, this is CDBG funding, this is somebody else's funding, the city. Is that something that our treasurer actually looks at and says, I can use this and start earning interest on this until it's allocated, really allocated, instead of just sitting there?
Committee member, Kinyanis Gabrielian, Chair Armenian Members of the Committee. The funding is actually reimbursable funding, so we don't get the cash upfront. So it's really not our money to earn interest on. So we have to expend the funds before we could draw down from HUD. So really, the funding doesn't come to the city until we expend it. So we really can't earn interest on it because the, the federal funds don't come to the city until we spend it. So reality is, is whether we allocate it to the agency, we, until they spend it, we won't, the, the city won't actually get reimbursed from HUD. We actually front the money, the city fronts the money, and then we get reimbursed for it.
We don't get a lump sum.
Got it, got it.
It's project by project.
Good, good. Okay. Well, somebody else is already getting it. I see.
Other questions? And I just wanted to point out, I was just doing a quick math on this in addition to what Maggie provided. So as she mentioned, YMCA asked for about $566,000 total. Two allocations later, we provided them $334,000. Plus to them, if we add the 65, it'll get them just shy of $400,000 total out of the $566 they originally requested.
Are we in question mode or we're in the?
Question.
Just questions, doing that to discussion of what to do with the funds.
Yeah, I'm going to go to that next. Any other questions about the options that staff presented? Okay. Any proposals? Mr. Avadisian.
First of all, I want to apologize to everyone, the viewers and the committee. My internet was very bad today. In a long time, I haven't been had issues like this. So my proposal, my suggestion would be if we go, what the staff has given us a couple of options, option one, two, or three alternatives. I think I want to go with an option one. Just that we give the lump sum to YMCA, add it to that $334,000 and let their project at least take off. And maybe a portion of it will be easier for them to fundraise for the balance of it.
I second the motion.
Right, discussion. I'll, you're going, Mr. Garibian.
No, not just overall, I mean, it's percentage wise also, it's almost 20% of what YMCA, we allocated already. And then going back to the next and adding it, and YMCA coming back next year is just going to be a loss factor. It's the only logical thing to do right now, just to allocate the $65,000 to YMCA and not to add it to the next year's budget.
Yeah, I, I was just going to add, you know, just in terms as we think about options. You know, we had several applicants who we did not fund at all. With the lowest amount being the Campbell Center Gogian House. I'm just kind of refreshing everyone's memory here. We did fund fully the Campbell Center Alma House. So they had a total of three projects, right? And the Alma House was kind of their middle amount. The Hamilton House was much higher at $485, and then the Gogian House was at $131. And then we had things like Lark, which was a very high amount, which is $608. I'm only pointing those out as, you know, if, if you were to even consider the, the lowest amount one, which is the $131 for Gogian House, you still with the 65 would not, you know, you would not, you would only come halfway in terms of what they're looking for. And we, and, and today, we don't know whether or not they'd be able to leverage to get the rest done or they'd have to come back. So personally, I will say that I support 100% the YMCA allocation. I think this way we get pretty close to, as you remember, we had a lot of discussion around this. Remember, the YMCA had to go and come back to the meeting at some point to see whether or not they could actually do the project for the original amount that they, we had allocated, which was 310. We were lucky to add to that. And I think we add a little bit more, we get them to $400,000 out of the $566. And hopefully, with their leveraging, they can get pretty close to getting that project done as opposed to having to come back for more. So I personally support the 65 going to YMCA. Other thoughts? Okay, if not, then we can, since we have a, a motion and a second, I would ask that we go to a vote. And the vote is on the motion to allocate the $65,000 returned by Glendale Adventist to the YMCA of Glendale First Floor All-Inclusive Locker Room Project.
Committee member, Savadisian?
Yes.
Kazarian?
Yes.
Kinyanis Gabrielian?
Yes.
Vice Chair Garibian? Vice Chair Garibian?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Chair Armenian?
Yes.
She carries.
Next agenda item.
Next is item 5B, Program Planning Schedule for the Fiscal Year 2021, 2022, CDBG ESG and Home Annual Action Plan. At one is a motion to review and approve the Program Planning Schedule for the Fiscal Year 2022, 2023, CDBG ESG and Home Action Plan. Maggie, I believe you're on mute.
Thank you, Iris. Chair Armenian Members of the CDBG Advisory Committee, although we have started our new fiscal year, we're already looking ahead to fiscal year 2022, 2023. Staff has prepared a PowerPoint presentation to review important upcoming dates for our CDBG calendar year. And a lot of good questions that came up throughout this meeting today will most likely be answered in these PowerPoints. So I'm going to go ahead and share and, and get started with our Program Planning Schedule as part of our process to implement our annual action plan for CDBG ESG and the home programs. So from July through October, what we do is we conduct an analysis of the 2020 U.S. Census to prepare. What we're doing is we're again looking at poverty levels, we're looking at population statistics. And we're doing this so we can estimate what the amount the federal government will be giving the city of Glendale for the upcoming fiscal year. So we may RFP it out and share that information with our public. And what we do is we prepare and make an announcement for upcoming community meeting, which is set for September. On August 30th, which is today, the Advisory Committee meets and reviews and hopefully will approve the Program Planning Schedule for 2022, 2023. And then in September, we have two meetings set. We have a CDBG Open House on September 15th. And then on September 27th, we have a virtual community meeting. So let me go ahead and show, share two of those flyers. The first flyer in yellow is our Virtual CDBG Open House. This one invites nonprofits who are new to the CDBG program to learn about the inner workings of what CDBG is and how, who's eligible, how to apply, just the ins and outs of the program. We have been very successful each year, as the committee knows. Each year, the committee recommends two to three brand-new agencies to, to become funded. And this virtual open house has been really truly successful overall. Now, on September 29th, and I apologize, I think the previous PowerPoint slideshow was September 27th, but the virtual public meeting is going to be held on September 29th, inviting citizens to come and discuss and give feedback on how to improve the neighborhood and learn about, also learn about the Fremont Park renovation project. This is a concerted effort. This is an effort between the Homeless Services Section and our Housing Division, along with our CDBG staff. We ask that the public come out, give their comments. We let them know just rough estimate of how much money we plan on getting in those three programs and how they'd like to see those dollars spent within the community. And then on October 18th, the CDBG Advisory Committee will meet again. This is where the committee will select a chair and a vice chair, approve the program priorities, approve proposed funding allocation plan, and then review and approve the 2022, 2023 RFP instructions and application packets for public social services and for the capital improvement programs. This is where we can tweak the RFP if the committee notices things that they'd like to add or delete. This is a great time and a great meeting to do so. And then what we do is we take all this information and the recommendations made by the committee. And in November, on the second, we go before the City Council and Housing Authority to approve the priorities, the funding allocation plan, and we authorize the issuance of the RFP. Now, we're also taking a report to approve the submission of the Section 108 loan application as well. And then following the City Council Housing Authority meeting, staff will publish the RFP notice and we send that out in a social media blast and through newspaper. In December, staff will hold a technical assistance workshop on December 2nd for prospective applicants who are applying for CDBG funding. This gives them a little bit more of technical assistance on how to apply, you know, the questions and how to plug in the information properly. On December 30th, 2021, at 5:00 PM, those proposals are due to staff. And in January, we spend the bulk of January reviewing all those proposals as staff. We create a strengths and weaknesses analysis and we receive a response from agencies who've submitted a proposal on their strengths and weaknesses analysis. In the beginning of February, we put those proposal packets together and we deliver them to the CDBG Advisory Committee for your review. And then on February 25th, 2022, the CDBG Advisory Committee will meet to review proposals and conduct interviews for public social services with community agencies and make funding recommendations. Normally, we have one full day. This year, we did not. We had a tremendous amount of proposals this year. So we always tentatively schedule a second day. And again, we've done so for Monday, February 28th, 2022, to schedule the Advisory Committee to meet and review CIP proposals if necessary. And then in March, we published that list of recommendations that the committee made to the public, again, in a newspaper ad and on social media. On March 31st, we plan to host a public hearing regarding the projects recommended for funding by the CDBG Advisory Committee. And again, this is a tentative type platform. We are going to continue with our virtual meetings because we feel that they are important to have. So we're going to have hopefully four platforms in the coming year. Virtual, in-person, if county protocols allow for the pandemic, email and telephone call-in comments. And then in May, on May 10th, we are scheduled, or tentatively scheduled, for a City Council Housing Authority meeting to approve the final funding recommendations that were made by the committee for 2022, 2023. We'll publish a 30-day comment period on those approved, on the approved annual action plan. And then this is where in May, where staff conducts the program and financial monitoring of the current CDBG-funded agency programs that we had discussed earlier. And we review those and we prepare a report for the committee in the upcoming fiscal year. In June, we submit that annual action plan to HUD. And then on July 1st, we implement the 2022, 2023 program year. This concludes the Program Planning Schedule. If you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer.
Questions from the committee?
I have a question.
Right, Mr. Avadisian.
I know we've talked about this before and I believe that we, we have changed some of the marketing concept of it to do nonprofits, inviting them for the, for the programs, the open house and the virtual, and the, and also the public ones. Are we doing anything different, especially now the COVID? Are we doing anything different for inviting them, making sure that everybody is aware of this? Availability of the funds, availability of those open houses, the meetings? Or, and also, are the committee members have any opportunity of, on their behalf or at their end, of marketing these flyers out, sending out to their contacts or whatnot? Or their communities, or their social pages?
We, we are obligated, thank you for that question, committee member Avadisian. So we are obligated by HUD to advertise as much as possible on the happenings that are related to the CDBG program. But that being said, our obligation is only to the newspaper-reading residents, which we know now is a tiny population. So what we are doing is we are doing the newspaper as we are asked to do by HUD. We post on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. We have posted now in our CSP newsletter, our City Connections. And then we have an email distribution list, which tends to work really well. We have an email distribution list for our city, CIP, CIP, CSP distribution list that we send out to everyone. And then the, we are starting Nextdoor as well. That was an actual recommendation that was made by the committee. Nextdoor also seems to work really well. So this is kind of how we're doing it. And we also have an email distribution list for our nonprofits, specific to our nonprofits. And those tend to work and it's the constant reminders as well that help. So that is basically how we are getting the word out about these, about our program, about our meetings, and trying to get as many nonprofits participating. We get a good turnout, about 10 to 13 new nonprofits show up every year, which is really, that's, that's saying a lot for our city. So it, it's, it's been a good turnout. It becomes a very difficult decision-making time for the committee because you have so many applicants.
Absolutely.
Again, it's always a good thing to be informative and give out that information to nonprofits who don't know about our program.
Thank you.
Mr. Avadisian's point, maybe just make sure that the committee members also get something that they can share online on their social channels. Because I think most of them are. because I think most of them are pretty active, so that can help as well.
Absolutely.
I have one just observation. I don't have any problem with what you've laid out. I only have one request. There are some dates that assume meetings, such as I think you mentioned, October eighteenth for the next, for a CDVG meeting, et cetera. If you guys could send out, staff could send out at least a calendar hold so that it ends up in our calendars as soon as possible. And that way, it avoids conflicts that might arise since as we get later in the year, things get tighter and tighter in terms of schedule. So the earlier the calendar invites go out, even if it's just a tentative hold, that would be helpful. Other questions? Okay, if not, I think you're looking for a motion to approve this schedule as you've laid it out, Maggie, correct?
I saw a move.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Mr. Garibian seconds. We have a vote?
Committee members of Avadisian?
Yes.
Kazarian?
Yes.
Kinyanis Gabrielian?
Yes.
Vice Chair Garibian?
Yes.
Chair Armenian?
Yes.
Shonkarys, thank you.
Okay, next agenda item.
Item six, committee staff comments.
I'll kick it off by just saying thank you as usual to the staff. A lot of great work in prepping this meeting. Apology, apologies to my fellow committee members and, and the audience in terms of my, my personal technical difficulties today between computers. So well, this, this is just part of our world, but again, I apologize, I had to switch computers. But again, thank you to staff for all the prep work and the great information as well as the discussion. It's always a very good discussion that we have in these meetings. So I appreciate it and I appreciate all the work that you guys do with all of our organizations to make sure we have a very fruitful and productive relationship with, with all of them because they do such great work in the community. I'm just, it's a great day when you have money to give again outside of the normal cycle. So I, I'm sure the YMCA is going to be very thankful for getting some additional allocation to achieve their objectives. So thank you. Other comments? Mr. Garibian?
Yeah, yeah, I just wanted to piggyback also and thank the staff on the screen and behind the screen. I'm sure there's a huge staff working with all of you because you guys are doing a great job. You guys lay out pretty much everything for us, makes our job always easier and always have answers to all our questions. And definitely, you guys get a lot for doing this fantastic job year after year after year and never failed us. So thank you so much.
I, I would just echo my colleagues, the staff, thank you very much. Also, I also want to apologize for my technical difficulties, my internet connections a few times. But we, we're around it, we got it right. Again, thank you very much. Looking forward for our next meeting, which is going to be a bit bigger challenge and more fun. It's going to be all day fighting to give, to help out all the organizations. Thank you very much.
I add my gratitude as well. Ditto to, to all those comments. It's, it's a pleasure to see such supportive staff members. Thank you.
knowledgeable and supportive.
I'll add on it and thank you for all the staff for hard work you're doing for the city and the nonprofit organization. Thank you, everyone.
Other comments?
Chair Armenian members of the committee, I just wanted to confirm that I, I did send out meeting invitations for all of the meetings that are part of the planning schedule. But I'll go ahead and resend those just in case, just so that, sure everybody.
If, if you have, that's great. I mean, I'll, I'll look for them. I may have missed them, Iris. Okay, if not, then we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved?
Okay.
Okay, meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much and have a great rest of your day, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.